Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started for the Tuesday, May 22 Committee of the Whole meeting. We're going to start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Will do. Alderman Redpath. Alderman Senor.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenczi.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderman Thailand.
Here.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Henner. Madam Chair, a quorum is present.
Fantastic. All right. Approval of the May 8, 2018 Committee Meeting Minutes.
The move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any presentations this evening?
We do not.
Okay. Ordinances tabled or remaining in committee? Do we? Go ahead.
2017-103, 2017-266, 2017-435, 2017-436, 2017-470, 2017-489, 2017-533, 2018-005, 2018-110, 2018-141.
That's it? Do we have any movement on those? Moving on to Public Works.
2018-231, a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in an amount of $38,241 may be used for the city share for planning work outlined in a technical work program as required by the 1962 Federal and Highway Act, Sats Springfield Area Transportation Study, MFT Section 18-00300-00-ES, as amended for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
2018-232, a supplemental resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in an amount of $28,600 may be used for land acquisition for the Springfield Rail Improvement Projects, MFT Section Number 18-00478-00-BR, for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
2018-233, an ordinance authorizing payment of $24,900 to Brenda S. Painter for purchase of a portion of one parcel located at 409 East Isles Avenue and authorizing disposal of 4,081 and 33 square feet of excess right-of-way area at 401 East Isles for the Springfield Rail Improvement Projects for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2018-234, an ordinance authorizing a contract with George K. Roat for the purchase of one parcel real estate located at 2336 South Fifth Street in an amount of $3,700 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2018-235, an ordinance authorizing purchase of small government term enterprise license agreement and maintenance agreement from ESRI Environmental Systems Research Institute, Incorporated, for an amount not to exceed $75,000 from July 25, 2018 through July 24, 2019, for the Office of Public Works and the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion. Could we have an explanation as to what this contract pertains to? Thank you.
This is the annual licensing agreement between us and the utility. We work together on our GIS assets. So everything we do with the mapping through Public Works, and then now the utility is a portion of that as well. So we combined them. They used to be two separate contracts about three years ago, I think, is when we combined them.
So we pay a fee to GSI-related entity that helps us track all our vehicles and that kind of thing?
Anything we use with GIS, that's what that is. Ezra is what it is, is the vendor. That's what it is.
Thank you, Director.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2018-236, an ordinance authorizing change order number one, an additional payment of $60,000 for a total amount not to exceed $460,000 to Lincolnland Concrete, Incorporated, and Capital Ready Mix, Incorporated, for ready mix concrete and related materials under contract PW-17-02-99 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent?
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2018-237, an ordinance accepting RFP PW-19-02 with Rayhan Brothers Doing Business as Sangamo Construction Company and Perry-Broughton Trucking and Excavating, Incorporated, for street and alley repairs for an amount not to exceed $550,000 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2018-238, an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement with Barbara Henner for a property located at 307 Woodcrest Drive.
Move to debate?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2018-239, an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement with Paul J. Cummings and Heather R. Cummings for the property located at 30 Twilight Lane.
Move to debate?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2018-240, an ordinance annexing certain described real property located at 30 Twilight Lane.
Move to debate?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Finance, 2018-230, an ordinance authorizing a transfer of funds in an amount of $100,000 from personal services into awards and grants for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Move to debate?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have the same reservations about this ordinance that I detailed last week in emergency passage. I think that it doesn't specify that it's coming out of one particular position. There's no way to do that within the 1100 series. The mayor could still, he could choose not to fill the sales manager position, which is needed. He could choose to fill everything and just run to December 1st and then end up with a zero balance, and then we'd have a showdown, whether to temporarily lay off all of CVB for three months. These are dedicated funds that cannot be spent for anything else. It's not like they go back to Fund 95 or anything to where it can be spent on sidewalks, roads, or any other department. It has to stay at CVB. This is pass-through money that comes directly to that. I mean, I understand the symbolism and the gesture here. It's just that in practicality, I don't see where it's going to be successful in the long run.
So we have a motion for debate in a second. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Any other discussion? Alderman Turner.
I just agree with Alderman Thailand. I understand the intent that the authors of the ordinance have. I just don't think that you're going to get the intended result with this ordinance. And I'm concerned that it may place, again, place the activities of that office in jeopardy later down the road. So I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's another avenue with which to address your issue, because quite frankly, I understand and I agree with your issue. I do. I just don't know that this is the way to address it. So would the, would you be willing to leave it in committee for another two weeks and maybe see if we can come up with another avenue with which to address the concerns?
I think that would be acceptable to all of us. I think you're, I think most of us that supported this ordinance would agree. We don't know what the outcome might be from our intentions. It's the role of the City Council to offer advice and counsel and consent to director positions. I can see a lot of scenarios if the mayor would allow to fill this by acting appointment for one year. Theoretically, then, a year from now, he could make a permanent appointment of the same candidate, and that candidate would then have another year to move into the city because, under our city code, an actual director has one year to move in. So we're just trying to send a message to the mayor that, for a number of reasons, that we would like more consideration and consultation with the council. Members of the council have expertise. Some of us have expertise in this area, and we just wish the mayor to reach out. And the mayor may come back with a compromise. He may say, okay, I'd like to put this person on a contract for four months, and in the meanwhile, we'll do a nationwide search for someone. This is a real gem of a position. I think we can recruit and get some outstanding candidates for this position. Who would not want to come into the city of Springfield and be the tourism director in the land of Lincoln, in the state capital? So I agree. I don't think anybody wants to rush into anything. I think the reason we put it on emergency passage last week was because the mayor announced he was going to start the payment on June 1, and we just wanted some immediate reconsideration. And I have no problem with leaving it in committee.
Can I offer a replacement motion to leave it in committee?
I'll withdraw my motion to place on debate if it's accepted by Alderman Redpath and the others that supported this.
I agree.
Second.
So I'll make a motion to leave it in committee.
Second.
Thank you.
Alderman McMiniman.
You're welcome.
Alderman Proctor, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, just, I kind of share the same. This one's kind of torn me, but for an appointment on this, like, I've never really received any calls and any confirmations we do, except for this one. I just don't know where it's all coming from. And so it's nothing against the appointee. It's more like a position of, well, I guess this is the only mechanism we have since the mayor does not intend to come forward with an ordinance to confirm this position. That is just our statement that I think maybe we need to look for another applicant, another candidate. So that's the reason why I sponsored this ordinance.
And I would speak to that, too. This has nothing to do with the candidate. As someone, again, who has worked in tourism for a long time, and I reminded the mayor of this, we have an election before 11 months that might produce some spectacular candidates that have really good tourism experience in Springfield. So, you know, I think, I think that, I feel badly for Ms. Kirby because I think she's been put in this position, and that wasn't our intent. That wasn't my intent, anyway.
Alderman Redpath.
You know, I think the process is the problem, and it's not necessarily the appointment. So maybe we ought to consider some other avenues to look at before we pursue this kind of thing. And obviously, the intent was to make sure that we had input, which we've never had because the mayor does not like for us to have input. So bottom line is that maybe we need to look at the process. So, thanks.
Alderman.
I have a question for Corporation Counsel. I thought part of the, and this is to kind of going with where Alderman McMiniman was talking about with, you know, that we go the year of with the acting, and then they can turn around and bring forth an ordinance to put the person in the position permanently. The way that we did that ordinance in 2015, limiting the person to one year of acting, if, for example, Ms. Kirby was left in the acting position, and then on May 1 of next year, the mayor brought forward an ordinance to place her in as the director of CVB, and then that position, that ordinance did not pass, did not get confirmed, because she's already done 12 months of acting, she would not be eligible to do another 12 months, correct?
That is correct.
Well, I disagree with that. I mean, I've looked at our city code, and it's very specific that an appointed director has one year to move in. So...
That was for residency, though.
We had a separate residency requirement for acting direct, for appointed directors, Chris, and that is a, in our code, it was pre-existing our residency ordinance of two years ago.
Okay. I guess then I would ask for an official, Mr. Circle, if you could look into what Alderman McMiniman is talking about. I thought that was a loophole we were trying to prevent when we did that ordinance in 2015. We didn't want someone being able to do two back-to-back actings of a year.
Well, those would be two actings, Chris. What we're talking about here is one year of acting and then one year of appointment. And so there's two different classifications. But I think that's all besides the point because we're going to put this in committee, and we're hoping the mayor will come up with a better approach than the approach he's brought to us to this point. And again, Chris, last week, you said, you know, this council doesn't fire or hire, and suggesting that this ordinance fires or hires somebody, that's incorrect, Chris. We're not firing anybody. Tell me who, that's a rhetorical question. Tell me who we've fired, and tell me who's we've hired.
No, what I was saying is that the...
So I think that's an inaccurate characterization. By the code, this council is to give advice and consent to director positions. Advice and consent. It's a very important role given to this council, and we really don't want to see, whether it be Mayor Houston or any other mayor, try to get around that. Now, you said you sponsored an ordinance a year ago that says, well, an acting director is okay for up to a year, and that doesn't require City Council approval or consent. Well, see, from my point of view, you just gave away some of our legislative authority when you put forward that ordinance, because what you're saying is, Mr. Mayor, you can ignore the council for up to a year.
Actually, we...
So I just wanted to get that out because we talked about that last week, and I didn't respond to your comments last week about the ordinance that gives the mayor one year of an appointment without the City Council having anything to say about it.
Okay. My turn. Chuck.
Hey, hey, hey. I say whose turn it is. Who wants to talk next? I saw Alderman Senor with his hand up.
No, not me.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right. Go ahead. Just being clear.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
No, you're welcome.
In the time that you were alderman, going all the way back, was there ever a limit on...
When Abraham Lincoln was president, that's how...
Going back, going back to...
Just about.
I was going to say Washington.
Going back to when our current mayor was still in high school, I guess. Was there ever a limit on acting before?
I can't tell you that. Corporation Counsel's been here as long as I have, so he could tell you that better than I could.
Because I know that we've had two different, in my time as an alderman, we've had two different fights with two different administrations. In 2007, with the Davenant administration, we had a fight over Ralph Caldwell as police chief, as Alderman Donlin was the chief of staff at the time. Remember that we had that issue where Caldwell was put in as the acting, and there was no limit on that?
I can't even imagine having a fight with you, Chris.
And then, second, under the Houston administration, we had an issue where a position that had been eliminated under the Davenant administration at CWLP was reenacted and filled with Bob Brosh by Houston, and we tried everything to get him to rescind that, and he was left in an acting position for over three and a half years until he retired. When we did the ordinance in 2015, the intent was to finally put a lid on the jar so that they could not be in an acting position indefinitely, which is the way it was prior to that.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Alderman, with all sincerity, I do recall what you're talking about. I think the, your ordinance to limit the timeframe to a, quote, "reasonable time of a year" was a good approach. Whether or not it should be adjusted further is maybe something that could be up for discussion. Alderman McMiniman, I don't know if you would be willing to have those conversations, but you seem to be not happy with the way it is presently.
Well, I'm just trying to introduce some thoughts and considerations here. We went through with our, the fourth attorney that Mayor Houston hired was an attorney who really had a residency in Bloomington, and that situation was an acting position. It was contrary to our residency requirement for our director positions. And so we've been through this a number of times. But the ultimate issue I'm concerned about is the fact that the City Council does have the approval authority for director positions. I don't think we should cede that authority in any kind of way. And it really, it goes back to the mayor's intentions on this and what he wants to do going forward. And I think the power of the purse is a legitimate power for the City Council, and we can exercise it when we wish to do so, whether it be to eliminate our entire department or eliminate a single position. That's our prerogative.
Alderman Proctor.
Alderman Donlin, I don't know if you'd be open to this, but I would be interested in the conversation with you. And I don't know why one year was picked as a magic number, but I'd be interested in moving that down to six months, if that's something you'd like to discuss.
Let's have those conversations. I think, excuse me, Madam Chair.
I guess.
Yeah, just don't do it as poodles.
I'd be open to have those conversations. Okay. Thank you.
Great.
Alderman Fulgenczi.
I'd still like to get a ruling from the Corporation Counsel on what the actual intent of this is.
I think that's a good idea as well. Alderman Redpath.
You know, the thing is, the difference between Mayor Houston's administration and this administration is they didn't have residency. And, you know, a person from Bloomington wasn't out of the question, but this mayor has pushed the residency so hard that everybody has to be in, everybody has to contribute, that now he's picked two people from outside the city and brought them in and asked us to deal with it. And, you know, I understand giving people a chance to move into the city, but I think one year's a little long. So I'll be, I'll be involved in that conversation, Jim.
I agree with Alderman Redpath. It's unusual that a mayor who, from my point of view, did a great job pushing the residency ordinance through the City Council, then picks two directorships in succession involving individuals that are not residents of the city. It seems strange.
He didn't want to take my suggestion to move it out to the county line, then we wouldn't have a problem.
Well, Williamsville doesn't have a CVB, so... Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of keeping this in committee?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
2018-241, an ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Sangamon County, Illinois, and a professional services agreement with Hanson Professional Services, Incorporated, to provide continuation and funding of a minority participation plan from January 1, 2018, through December 31, 2019, and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in an amount of $60,000 from unappropriated fund balance.
Motion for consent?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to be added as a sponsor. I'm kind of, actually, I'm kind of disturbed that the mayor didn't ask my thoughts on it, like you, Alderman DeSensio. You know, we have people sitting around the council that have experience in these areas and not included in the conversation. I have spoken with Kevin Seals at Hanson, and Satch Picore is a very successful program. As a matter of fact, one of the young men that came through the program is currently doing the underpass at Ash Street, whose name is Nick Moore. So, you know, I think the program's very successful, and it seeds out people of what the purpose of the program was. So, Mr. Clerk, if you would, and me as a sponsor, I'd appreciate that.
Will do, Alderman.
Alderman Proctor.
With the mayor not here, Alderwoman Turner requests to be added as a co-sponsor also.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Alderman Turner.
Yeah, just let me say, this is a program that has been ongoing for several years, and those, the conversations to establish the program were had far prior to that. So this is a, this is a program that was discussed at the roundtables, of which Alderman Senor is a member because of his position as ward to alderman, and there's been ample opportunity for everyone who participates at that meeting, as well as others, to have a voice and be included. This is not something that just sprung up overnight. It's been maybe four years, four years in the making.
When they have the roundtable meetings, I would like that those to be made public, so I can attend.
You're a member, you're the...
Wow, everyone's feisty tonight. Wow.
No, I just, I just really, and this is the last thing I'm going to say about this. I just think that, that these meetings, City Council meetings, should be about trying to take care of the business of the city and not trying to interject other promotional opportunities. And let's just be clear and stay on task and stay on subject, because I assure you, when things are said that I think are misleading or untrue, I'm going to definitely make that known because I don't think it's fair to Mayor Langfelder in his absence, nor me as the co-sponsor, to say that this is something that, you know, has been done without anybody's knowledge. This is a program that's been ongoing for at least four years, and there was discussions about it at least two years prior. So it's been, and it's been a community endeavor. This is not just a city project. It's been a community endeavor. So there's been ample opportunity for everyone to be involved.
And I would just like to add that because the mayor isn't here tonight, let's not all pile on. That's not fair. The things I, I had to say to the mayor, I said to his face last week, so I think we shall be respectful of that.
Well, I told him I've been disappointed with him many times in City Council, so it's not just a one-time thing.
Okay. All those, do we...
Well, Madam Chair.
Yes.
In all due respect, the mayor isn't required to be at our Committee of the Whole.
We know that. We've established that a couple of weeks ago.
We don't want to set a precedent where you can never say anything that relates to the mayor just because he's not...
That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying, tonight, everyone is piping in and piling on, and, you know, we...
Is there someone in the water tonight or something?
Yes. It's really nice out. Yes, spring fever. All right. So are we all, go ahead.
And the last thing, this has nothing to do with Hanson's. You know, I'm very proud of the program that they have, and I do attend the meetings, so...
Congratulations. All right.
And it's funny now. It's funny now.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
2018-242, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 214-07-14 and 022-01-18, authorizing execution of redevelopment agreement with Bright New Day Investments, LLC, for the properties located at 518, 520, and 524 East Monroe Street, utilizing central area tax increment finance funds through the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move for debate?
I can make a motion to hold it in committee.
Move for debate?
Again? Second.
So there's two motions, one for debate and one to hold in committee.
One for debate, got a second.
Yes.
Correct.
I was a second for Alderman Fulgenczi.
So protocol is, point of information, that they have a right to make a motion to hold it in committee, but we vote on the committee hold first. Is that right, Corporation Counsel?
The order in which the motion is made, the first motion made should be voted on first.
Perfect.
And that's up to the chair to decide, since we're multiple people trying to be recognized.
Lucky me. Alderman Senor, you wanted to say something first?
Yes, sir. Counsel, so what would, with the order that the ordinance is, I mean, the votes were made, how does, what would the procedure be if there was a vote for, I mean, a motion for, what was your motion, Chuck?
To debate?
Debate? Motion for debate, then we got a motion to hold in committee. What's the procedure?
He just said, I get to whoever, the first motion was to move to debate.
So if that one doesn't pass and the hold-in committee passes, it just is held in committee? Is that correct?
If the, because there were competing motions simultaneously, the chair determines who they recognize first, and so if the motion to place on debate is deemed to be first in order, it was seconded, then there would be a, that would be taken up first if it succeeds, or if the majority votes for it, then that passes. If it does not pass, then you would take the next motion in order.
Okay. So, Alderman Fulgenczi.
Can we discuss the motions now?
Certainly.
Fine with me. We're discussing everything else.
Well, I guess, I guess I don't see the need for the motion. If he hasn't been given any money, he doesn't qualify to get any TIF money, and there's nothing that shows that he'll get any TIF money unless he completes terms of the contract, it sounds like a senseless motion. it sounds like a senseless motion.
Alderman Proctor?
Corporation Council, can we get a status update on this, on where everything stands, so everybody's on the same page?
Certainly. I mean, this is, I think, similar to the last discussion that we had. The original agreement was adopted in July of 2014. It had proceeded up to the point that the original scope of work was modified, the original loan that was in place with the original lender became in question, and then subsequent to that, there was an adoption of a subsequent ordinance in January of 2018 that modified the scope of the work and also the funding. And that established certain times. If you recall, there is some complexity to this, because it's both city TIF funds, there's also federal tax credits, and then there's also private financing. So, those three legs have to, according to the January 2018 ordinance, have to be in place before any closing could actually occur. The original schedule that was in the January 2018 ordinance provided for, I believe it was February 28th or March 1st, for the closing, that was the estimate at that time for the tax credit closing. That closing did not occur, and there's been now multiple attempts to put a financing package together to allow it to proceed. And, at this point, the original schedule has not, the original scope of work and the original schedule and the subsequent schedule, the subsequent scope of work has not been completed. It's within the, and to make it clear, the reasons for that have to do with the timing on not the city side of it, but really on the private sector side because of the requirements for the private sector financing. The tax credits are in place, they put certain restrictions on that it was difficult on the private financing side to meet. So, originally, when this was first, when this issue first developed, the mayor and OPEC actually put a hold on the funds back in the fall of 2016, when the original private financing indicated that they were not going to renew the financing. So, currently in place, it would require all three to proceed in order for any actual funds to ever be released. And presently, the current schedule is out of date, it has not been met in terms of what was adopted in January or agreed upon in January.
Alderman Proctor, then Alderman Fugensi, then Alderman Redpath, then Alderwoman Turner.
So, to use your analogy about the three-legged stool, which leg is kind of busted on this and has not come to fruition that's holding everything back?
Well, the, it is clear at this point that the private financing side of the equation has not been able to be put in order to allow the closing to occur with the tax credits. The tax credit individuals, the companies buying it, and there is some complexity there, tax credits have been awarded, however, they put certain requirements in order to do that closing. And so, the private financing side of the package has not been able to be put together by the developer in a way that was satisfactory to the private financing entity, and therefore there's never been a closing. The city's position has been uniform throughout this, and there's been a massive effort to try to get the private financing effort in place. However, all of the requirements, both from the private financing and from the tax credit side, have not been able to be satisfied.
I've got a few thought questions, but I'll let others talk right now.
Alderman Fugensi.
So, what I'm hearing from you is, it would almost be redundant to say that we're not going to give him the money when the mayor has already done that, because those things are not in place to award the money.
The mayor and OPEC had done that in August of 2016, when the initial problem developed with the private financing, the continuation of the construction loan. However, in January of this year, one of the conditions that was adopted was that there would have to be no dispersal unless there was a closing on the tax credit. So, that position was reaffirmed in January, the one that the mayor had initiated when this problem first developed.
So, basically, what I'm hearing is that since he's already established that, all this does is reinforce that. Is that right?
Well, the effect of the ordinance would be to withdraw the authority to proceed with the project.
And that would make a...
And what I think, and again, to help paraphrase, what I think has happened is that the, on the purely, and I see that the private financing folks are here, so they may have a different view of it, but if they were able to have come up with a conclusion, then the project would have already proceeded, and now alternative private financing is being pursued. And the city's position has been uniform, which is, no money will be distributed under any circumstances if there's not a closing that provides funding to complete the entire project. And that has been kind of a fundamental point for the last, really, year and a half, because the private financing has not been in place, and the requirements for the tax credit closing have not been able to be met.
Alderman Redpath.
I'll go on a roll call vote.
Are we done talking? Because I think some other people wanted to talk.
Alderman Senor, I'd like to talk also.
Well, Alderwoman Turner first.
Well, we'll get to my point, but I'm on a roll call vote.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was just going to say, just to add one point here. I think what is being requested, if I understand it correctly, just from the, from the bank and also from the developer, is they would like an extension of time to perform. So, it's that simple in terms of a choice or policy decision.
Alderwoman Turner?
Just point of clarification, if this ordinance is successful, there's nothing that prohibits the developer to come back and request the funding again, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and the funding, the money would go back into the TIF that would make it available for other projects that may be underway, correct?
It's never left the TIF fund at all, it's still there.
Right, but it would just be freed up, because right now it's dedicated.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Donlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What I'm hearing, what I'm hearing the Corporation Council say is, this ordinance, and by the way, Alderman Hanauer expresses his regrets that he couldn't be here, he's with the mayor out in DC on the trip to lobby for the city of Springfield and the area, but what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is that the conditions of the redevelopment agreement that were passed by this body earlier this year, and the bank, the developer, the city, at least those who voted for the project, all agreed that those deadlines were to be followed, were not followed. So, all this ordinance does is codifies, codifies the actions that really weren't taken. And, you're right, Alderman Turner, so anybody could come back and ask for a different arrangement, different redevelopment agreement, and this just codifies the actions that were put forward. And by the way, if this goes to debate, you know, we don't meet for another two weeks, so I would advocate for that. Thank you.
Alderman Tyland?
Couple of different questions. Mr. Zirkel, the original ordinance that this is repealing, were the parties in there specifically named, other than Bright New Day Investments? Was it specified parties, or was it just listed as that they had to get, you know, private financing of X amount, or was, you know, were there other parties named in there that are no longer part of this?
I can, I'll be happy to check that. I don't believe so, but I will check that for sure.
Okay, because that, that makes a difference one way or the other. It doesn't make a difference in the fact of that the time period has passed and the deal has not been met in the time period of what the ordinance said, but if the principles are listed in it, or there's people who were party to the previous ordinance that no longer are, it really does make it a moot point, and it does make it to the point where if Mr. Lawrence gets, you know, the funding and everything together, they would have to come for a new ordinance anyway. And I guess the next question would be for Val Yezel. To the point of what Alderman Turner was saying, right now, you, even though the money's not spent, the TIF money is kind of appropriated on paper so that you don't over-appropriate it. We're trying to make sure that we don't spend the same $1,000 10 times.
Right.
So, that money is blocked, even though it's available, you've blocked it off because this project has already been previously approved for this amount of TIF money. So, that means if someone did come in to apply for TIF money, those dollars could not be considered open.
Yes, I think you're right.
Because, I mean, it's a guessing game what it's going to bring in anyway.
And it just depends on cash flow, it depends on how the projects run, so, yes, I think in theory, yes.
And dealing with estimated dollars, which is what TIF usually does from year to year, we don't know what TIF is going to bring in until it's done.
Right.
But, on paper, we have these funds allocated.
They're obligated at this point.
And then, if we were to, if we were to have other projects come in and start getting approved, then this money would still be held aside and not available for a potential project unless it gets repealed.
Correct.
Okay, so, I guess where I'm going with this is, I agree with everything Alderman Donlin said. I think that the previous terms of the ordinance that are listed were not met. The difference to me is that even though OPEC and the mayor have determined that they were not going to release any money, the mayor can change his mind on that without coming to us. There's no ordinance that blocks it. Once we approve the TIF funds for it, someone could, you know, unless an ordinance prevents the payment, we don't get a say in that, and that kind of goes back to some of the earlier conversations today. So, to me, if the deal's broken, then we need a new deal if they get it pulled together anyway. So, repealing the current one just takes the old deal off the table, which is already null and void anyway.
Alderman McManaman?
Let's keep our mind, our goal set on what we really want to see happen here. We've got a very ambitious, complicated project. It's probably the most complicated repurposing of buildings downtown that we've seen in 10 years. So, we don't want our monies to go to waste that we've already put into the project. We'd like to see the project eventually get completed. We'd like to see this happen without damage to our subcontractors that are unpaid. We'd like to see this happen without damage to the bank that's on the line. And, so, I suppose, you know, if we, if we could add language to this ordinance, Mr. City Corporation Council, it says that if we pass this ordinance, we encourage, we have language that says, we encourage the developer to continue efforts to find financing partners, and that the city council remains eager to see a financing package come in to being that does work for everybody, because that's what we want. We want to kind of bring this back to life from...
Life support.
Yeah, it's on life support. We'd like to see the patient survive this if we could, because everyone comes out better if the project gets completed somehow, some way. So, we don't want to, you know, pull the plug on this, or have potential investors out there think, oh, the city council wants to abandon this once, you know, is done with this. No, that's not the signal we want to send. We want to send, we want to say this if we can. So, I hope we can put together some language that's acceptable to all the aldermen, that encourages the developer to continue his efforts to find financing partners, because that's good for downtown, and it's good for all those that have invested this to this point.
Alderwoman Turner?
You know, I think that everyone wants to see development in Springfield. I think that it's in Springfield's best interests to have that happen. I think that everyone is, has been a big cheerleader for the re-generation of downtown Springfield, and we all are on that same page. However, we cannot control the financial stability of a developer, and it doesn't matter how much time we spend and how many, and how long we, how long of a timeframe we provide, we do not have the ability to provide financial stability to a developer. And, that's what I think we're faced with. I think we're faced with a developer that does not have the wherewithal to complete this project, and has not been able to identify the financing to allow him to complete the project. And I think that we've been very generous, we've been, this is a road that we've been down for a very long time. Yeah, and so, I think at some point, we have to say, you know, we can no longer continue to have this money tied up in this situation. And we're not saying that we would never support the project, I think everybody is in support of the project. I think that all we're saying is that we, the door is still open, and if at some point the developer does become in a more financially stable situation, he can come back and reapply for the TIF funds. And I assure you, I think that if that happens, he would be looking at support from the council to do that.
Alderman Fugensi.
Yeah, I wanted to get a point of, a clarification from Val. If somebody, if somebody applies for TIF money, how long would it take us to say, this is no longer valid, and we'll go ahead and approve you? I mean, can't we do it just within a week or so?
If you repeat, if you rescind this, is that what you're asking?
No.
No.
If we hold this in committee.
Oh, if you hold in committee.
And somebody comes here, and we've got this money allocated or reserved for him, and somebody else wants the money that has a valid project, and he's still not met the things, the conditions, couldn't we just rescind it at that time?
Sure. Yes, yes.
So that really...
Because it takes us a while to go through an approval process. There's a checklist for someone new that would be coming in, that we'd want to vet the project and make sure that this, the project would be a valid TIF request.
So, then rescinding the money is not nearly a problem as much as it is approving the money?
Is that a trick question?
No, that's, that's a question that really relies...
No, no, I know exactly what you're saying. I know exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, but Val, don't, if we commit the money, we can't pull it out from under the rug.
Right.
I mean, if another project comes up, we're not going to say, hey, we decided to go with this project.
Right.
If he hasn't met the conditions, I think...
Well, but the point is, is there's circumstances that they have not met. That's why this is, this is being challenged. And, but, we wouldn't pull the rug out from under somebody if we committed the money to them, even if another project come out. That's the point.
No, no.
Thank you.
Alderman Proctor, then Alderman Senor.
Yeah, this one's obviously in Ward 5, downtown, and fortunately, I've been dealing with this project for nearly two years now. And, it's one of those situations where, support downtown, support the project, want to see great things happening, echo everything that was said about, around this horseshoe about supporting downtown and stuff, but unfortunately, the goalposts on this thing have kept changing every time we thought we were there. And, and I feel like, for downtown, there's only so much TIF money, and to lock up so much for something that may well never happen, even though with all good due diligence efforts to try to get something done, to happen, it just seems disingenuous to the TIF when other people might be interested in doing other projects on such magnitude. And, again, I want to echo, I support this project getting done eventually, and I wish the private financing came together, but again, when we were here, I think it was in January, you know what this thing, we were told everything was in line, everything was lined up, especially on the private financing and from the lender. And then the find out later on after we passed this, that it, that it wasn't, are we just getting false information, or, and I understand with big projects, like this, things change constantly. Maybe this is a question more for the bank, because why can these things never seem to get flushed out? And to be honest with you, I don't know if this project was ever made. We have a legislative term we use in the Capitol called, is it soup yet? And so, I don't know if this was ever soup yet when it came for the previous administration, and we're having to deal with the aftermaths right now of this thing. And so, again, there's a lot of effort to try and make something happen, but I just, I just want some real answers on what, what status this project is and try to get to the bottom of it. And if this developer can't do it, I'm sure the next one could probably bring it together and do it. And then, in regards to the development agreement, maybe, if the names aren't mentioned, the different lender, the new lender might come on board, if those aren't highlighted, and that doesn't technically violate the redevelopment agreement, but it sure and violates the spirit of the development agreement that we all voted on here back in January. So, if there's new parties coming in for this project, I think we all need to be aware of those, who those are, and then that, that needs to come forward. So, like you said before, if this passes, there's nothing stopping that new development contingent coming forward and saying, we've got this put together, and this is how we're going to do it for you. And then we vote on that.
Alderman Proctor, the redevelopment agreement is just with the developer? That is the only name?
I understand that.
Right.
But I think in transparency with TIF dollars, is it what we're dealing with and the magnitude, there's got to be a different level than just that.
Correct, but I just want to make sure you understood that it was just, there weren't any additional names.
That's why I point out, that's why I point out, but I'm trying to make the point that with TIF dollars, there probably needs to be a different level of trust and transparency that we need to deal with when we make these votes, dealing with public money on this magnitude. And I just, regardless if it's not technically what the timelines were, it sounds like dropped, but if technically, because different partners have come involved, that that doesn't trigger a violation... that that doesn't trigger a violation, it should in the mind of how we perceive these ordinances moving forward, that those need to be taken into consideration, you know, when we're voting on these things. So, again, support downtown, support the project eventually getting done, but I just don't see how, right now, under these conditions, it can.
Alderman Señor.
Mr. Zirkel, why do we not require a performance bond on projects like this? I think if we had a performance bond, we wouldn't be in this situation, or we would have some type of insurance to, or insurance and assurance to cover us when things got to this point. So, can you answer that question for us?
A performance bond typically is for a public project, like for example, a parking ramp or something the public owns. Private, this is privately owned property. And so, unless the bank, unless the private financing entity would want to require an actual bond, and they're very expensive, then typically, it would be up to the private property owner to decide that.
But it's a private project, but it's using public funds, so...
That is correct. TIF money, yes.
Doesn't that make it a public property, I mean, a public project in certain sense?
Well, TIF money is used for private development. So, the TIF money is used to promote renovations, projects, and so on. But those are all privately owned, not publicly owned.
Okay. And then, my question goes back to if this ordinance does come to fruition, what's the disposition of the restaurant? I mean, would that be affected in any way, shape, or form if this project doesn't go forward, and we have three buildings sitting there half completed or not completed, and in disrepair? What is their situation?
Well, Mr. Lawrence still owns the buildings, correct?
Through Bright New Day.
Yeah.
That is correct.
So, the restaurant wouldn't be affected in any way, shape, or form?
Well, the, I do not, we're not privy to the lease that exists between the tenant of the restaurant and the private property owner. And so, I'm not sure what the status would be with the restaurant operation. These things, as mentioned earlier by Alderman McMenamin, are so very complex because of all the entities involved. And for example, the issue that developed with the private financing side really dealt with requirements that were imposed by the tax credit buyer, which happened actually after the January discussion, where they wanted a letter of credit in the amount of the remaining, in effect, alderman, almost like a bond, where the tax credit buyer wanted a letter of credit to secure performance of the final work. The private financing entity did not want to post the letter of credit, and the city, the mayor, talked to multiple other banks to see if someone else would provide the letter of credit to allow the closing to go forward. But there was an inability to basically obtain the letter of credit, which has to be private, you know, private in nature.
Okay. And then, we keep talking about all these other people standing in line to come and get TIF funds. I don't see very much development going on downtown. And I'm not trying to speak for Mr. Lawrence, but I do, Alderman Proctor and everyone else, I do respect everyone's position on these things. And I understand the goalpost keeps moving, and I respect your thoughts on that. But how do we make a decision, and with respect to developers anywhere wanting to come and do business, when last week, there was a development that wanted to come in, and we said no because it's not the right fit for that area. Four weeks ago, we had a development, we said no, we don't want it because it didn't meet certain criteria. Now, we have this development that is failing. I would be the first to say, I agree, it's failing. But how do we reach a decision and make a vote and say, okay, we're open for business. But if you get in trouble once, you get in trouble twice. And maybe that's what it is, the more you get in trouble with the finances, and you show that you can't do the project, and we're up here voting as a council, and we make a decision on that. And I would love to see the project get finished. I think it would be very good for Springfield. So, I'm kind of torn, because I want the project to be completed, but yet, Alderman Proctor, I share your same concerns. Is this, you know, is this the right way to get this project finished? So, thank you for allowing me to make my comments.
Anyone else?
Point of order. Corporation Council, if this fails here, it goes, stays in committee, correct? It only takes six votes to pull it out of committee at the council meeting?
You know, I'm not sure if it requires two-thirds or if it requires six. I can check that for you.
So, it's important for us, if we're going to feed this, to do it tonight, then?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
We've got some individuals here that have expertise and have, the developers here, Mr. Rick Lawrence, the banker, Mr. Greg Curl is here. There may be some other individuals that wish to speak about what they've heard tonight. And if anybody wants to say something that is relevant to our decision, I think now's an opportunity. Madam Chair.
And that's fine with me, but you will all be limited to five minutes strictly, because I know in two weeks, we're going to have the same discussion all over again. So, if you want to speak, you get five minutes, period.
Good evening. Last time I was here was in January, and I was asking for an additional TIF request. I was given that opportunity by this council and alderman. They approved the TIF. The TIF established dates for things to be done, which is correct, for the tax credit closing. But at the time, it was based on information that we had available to us from the tax credit investor, NTCIC. And it was a valid timetable, but I was not aware of the requirement for the performance guarantee in the letter of credit. I exercised a lot of extra work and effort to try to make that work. I was unable to get that to work. And the date was missed. And, but since then, I have dropped back and regrouped and tried to refocus on picking up and fixing the pieces that were broken. The mayor had a saying that we have a three-legged stool. We've got the TIF, we've got the bank funding, and I've got the tax credits. The TIF was approved. My funding, when I ran into the tax credit problem, the VITLA lender wanted to regroup, and they withdrew from going forward with the funding. I have since then secured another lender. I've got a lender, I've got a lender's letter of interest in the amount of $3,750,000. And I've worked through the closing process of closing on this loan. When I close on this loan, it will allow me to settle with First Bankers Trust, so, and settle things with them. This loan will also allow me to take care of the vendors and subcontractors that haven't been paid. And this loan, this funding will also take care of the shortfall in the sources and uses for the project. So, they'll be completed. It's, I've got the letters, it's a signed letter commitment, but I'm unable to, I don't have a closing date for this loan at this time. And it'll also allow me to go back and meet the tax credit requirements. The tax credit requirement issue with the guarantee, I've reached out, when I took a step back here after things crashed and burned to regroup, I've reached out to other developers in the area, in the state, and that have tax credit experience. And I started out with a list of about 12 developers. Since the last four or five weeks, I've been working through those developers, ones that might have an interest and ones that didn't, ones that were qualified, ones that didn't work. I've got it down to two developers, of which one of the developers kind of rises to the top, being, carrying a lot of tax credit experience, 40-plus years' worth of projects. I was able to talk to the gentleman, have him come look at this project and walk it, and give me his opinion on it, and get his input about it. I am hopeful that I can rely on that expertise to go forward and move this project forward. And it will alleviate the tax credit issue with the tax credit investor, so I can get that closing date established. The other thing that bubbled up in this transaction, we stepped back and regrouped, was that the type of, the construction sequence was, the scope was revitalized and changed, which allows me to go back to the tax credit investors, and we're going to reassess, NTCIC is going to reassess the tax credits. And there's about another additional $500,000, $500,000 in tax credits that could be added to the tax credit investment. And it was that item that had to go back and regroup, plus changing from non-contributing to contributing to the Bateman Kennedy Building for tax credits, that tied up the tax credit closing date. And when those things are finalized, the new tax credit closing date can be set. My shortcomings at this time are a firm date for the loan closing, to fund the loan, which would allow to take care of the First Bankers issue, and take care of the accounts payable, and provide funding for the project, and to establish a date with NTIC for the tax credit closings.
Mr. Lawrence, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council?
I'm Greg Curl with First Bankers Trust, 1408 North Seventh, resident of Springfield. You know, it's obvious to me that communication, you know, has been lapsed, and I don't think this council's been kept very well informed as far as what's happened since that January meeting and the approval of the TIF funds. I thought we had made clear at the time that our financing was conditioned, I've heard that word mentioned several times, we did have conditions in place for our funding. And one of the conditions was the approval of the TIF funds. That was met that evening. The second condition was approval of the TIF financing, the TIF, or the tax credits. And that was not in place the night that that decision was made on the TIF money. And so, what transpired after that meeting was the due diligence process of the tax credit investor. And one of their conditions became, as what's been referenced already, that a performance bond or a payment guarantee be required for the tax credits to be approved. And we were asked, as has been mentioned, to provide that payment guarantee. I thought we'd also made clear, though, that evening when you voted on this passage, that, you know, we did have additional funds that were under consideration to go into the project, and that those funds would be used to satisfy what was owed to the subcontractors and the unions. And that was the limit of our exposure. We never considered anything beyond that additional 1.5 million, although that 1.5 million was conditionally approved, subject to approval of the tax credit funds. And that's the hurdle that could never be overcome. The tax credit funds were not approved with Mr. Lawrence as developer, because he couldn't provide a performance bond or a payment guarantee. So, time has passed. There's been other developers that have, you know, been considered. We, in fact, are in contact with other developers. We would like to see the project move forward, although I can tell you, we have no interest in staying involved in the project with Mr. Lawrence or another developer. And in fact, I want the council to understand that for another developer to come forward, we have made a decision to charge off 1.4 million of existing debt. So, 459 days ago, we entered this project. We are willing to walk away from the project 459 days later, taking a charge off of 1.4 million. So, you can say what you want about the private financing, but I'm here to tell you that, you know, we have no appetite for staying in the project with Mr. Lawrence or another developer moving forward, although we are interested in seeing the project move forward, and will do what we can to help find another developer that can step in in place of Mr. Lawrence or together with Mr. Lawrence, whatever the case may be, to see that the project does move forward. The only, the final point I would just make is that in order for this to still all happen, it does require the support of the city. And if the city were to rescind the funds that have been approved, Mr. Lawrence or a new developer, whatever the case may be, will not happen. And the buildings will remain vacant, and you will have, we will all have blighted properties on our hands for many years to come. That's all I have to say.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes.
Quick follow-up question, if that's all right?
Yes.
Kind of feel sorry for you, because I think you got in the same situation that we all get here with this. I know this decision, I think for this loan or whatever, was probably made outside of your decision-making, from what I understand. So, I understand where you're coming from. But did you say that you're no longer wanting to be the lender?
No.
So, that 1.5 million, is that...
It's off the table.
It's off the table, no? Okay. So, that, so that makes, so does that say that this development agreement then is no longer applicable, if the bank just said that their 1.5 million is no longer there, Corporation Council?
Well, I think you're seeing a little bit of the discussion that has taken place over the last month or two, trying to get the parties all on the same page. And effectively, what is being proposed or being asked for is additional time to find a replacement lender. And the developer, I think I mentioned earlier, had indicated that they, they felt at least that there was some opportunity to have a new lender come in and effectively take out or refinance out the current lender. And as Greg has indicated today, that, they've indicated over the last month, that would be very satisfactory to them.
With a $1.4 billion charge off.
So, the developer has been searching for basically a replacement private financing component that would satisfy both the current private financing entity and the tax credit buyers.
And I believe that Mr. Lawrence has identified maybe a potential developer and a potential bank or lender. That's about all I know. I would like to think that, you know, the developer and the lender are legitimate, and, you know, things will move forward, because I think that's a much better path for us to exit than to be just left with the buildings in their current state and condition. But, you know, we won't be the lender of record moving forward.
Thanks for that clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Can you please state your name and address?
I can, and I will.
Thank you.
My name, excuse me, my name is Tim Boyle. I reside in Kirkwood, Missouri. I'm president of a company called City Property Company that has worked in excess of 25 years in the city of St. Louis. I'm here today because I'm one of those, I guess I'm the last man standing, perhaps, that Rick was talking about, through a, through a net...
Through a, through a network of bankers, I got the call that Rick was looking for some help. And I called him and I immediately understood what he was going through and wanted to see if I could help. So I have a few things that I prepared to talk about, but after hearing everybody visit here, I think maybe I can offer three things, at least from my eyes, not having two and a half years of pain that you all have had on this project, but have had my own set of pains on projects and seen the city of St. Louis issues. And that is, the first is that these projects are enormously difficult to put together. Not only are there, I speak of three legs of development, marketing, physical nature of the project and the financing of it. And then the Corporation Council spoke of the three legs of just the financing. And you've got to put all that together at one time, and it's really hard. And especially when your lenders and others move, move the goalpost or the goal line, as you were saying. So if I have time, I might come back to that. But I think if this project doesn't go through, at least this is my vision and my experience from 30 years of doing this, if this project doesn't go through and it continues to languish over on the corner over here, the next guys up are going to be second guessing whether they want to do this or not. And I might say that I was kind of known in St. Louis for doing, being the pioneer, the first guy of doing a project downtown St. Louis and doing a project in South City. And, and so I kind of have an understanding of how that works. And, and then, but on the other hand, on the other hand, the other point I want to make is if it does go through and he is successful and people actually live in the building like you all, like everybody here, well, I don't know whether you do, like, I now believe, Rick absolutely believes, the bank did believe until the thing went sour, that there will be people that want to live in this building. And when other developers see that, that folks want to live in this building, those other developers are going to come along and want to build in downtown Springfield again. And this is, as we know, this is going on in every city in America. And they just got to find the first developer to pull it off. And so I just want to make the third point, which is the most important point, and that I have walked every square foot of the building, of the buildings with Rick, the three buildings. I have reviewed all of the due diligence, I've done my own due diligence on, I've done lots of historic tax credit projects. Everything appears to be back in position. And the three legs of the financing are what we're debating here tonight, because, because that is kind of what the holdup is. The corner is a fabulous corner. The developer and the, and the, and the construction company is a fabulous person and construction company. I think it's clear by me walking around with him and how many people he knows and how many people address him, he's well-known and well-thought-of in this town. So he's, he had, he's got the, it's unbelievable that he was able to put these pieces back together under un, difficult circumstances. Very few people would have the integrity to stick it out and have the persistence that he has had up to this point. And if you'll just buy him a little time, I think he'll go on that. I, I guess I should say, I, he asked, he asked me if I wanted to be a partner, and I said, I don't know whether I want to be a partner or not, but I will come up and vouch for you, because that's how strongly I believe in these type of projects, in this type of area, and with this type of person. With that, thank you. Mr. Boyle, Madam Chair.
Alderman Turner first, she raised her hand.
Yes, ma'am.
So I guess I just have a question. I'm not clear what your role is in this project. Are you offering financing or you, are you, what's your role?
No, great question, I wasn't clear on that. And not on purpose, I'm just trying to cut to the chase. Primarily, I was, I was asked to come in as a, to come up and visit and review everything as a consultant to, when you get in a position like he, that Rick's in, you lose some of your confidence when everybody's picking at you and things are falling apart. He knows what to do, he's put all this together. I've done very little, but other than giving him support, that he's doing the right things. And that, and, and, no, I'm not, I've not signed up to be a financer or sign on personal guarantees or any of that. Strictly, my role currently in standing here tonight is strictly as a consultant.
Okay, and I appreciate that.
So far, an unpaid consultant, which I'm happy to be at the moment, so.
I would say something, but I'm not going to.
Okay.
And, and I appreciate your comments, but I think you're telling us what we all know. We all know that it's a great corner, we all know that it's a fabulous project, we all know that once it's completed, it's going to be tremendous for downtown. What we don't know is how the developer is going to, is going to do that. And unfortunately, I don't think that you've given us any insight into that.
If I may, if there's not anybody competing for these two and a half million dollars or whatever the amount is right now anyway, why not give him a chance? Give him another, and I realize he's already had, he's had some chances. I will tell you, based on the story I got and the, and the information that I've reviewed, the developer that came out of St. Louis to kind of pull this thing out, wanted to be a, first agreed to be a partner and then, then wanted to take it over and then walked away. And, you know, he, he, he was willing to give up the project to get it going, and then these guys walked away on him, if that's, if I understand the story correctly. And, and what'd he do? He went to bed that night, probably said a few prayers, got up the next morning and said, how am I going to fix this? And he, and, and I think he's got, I, my experience says, everything in writing that he has from the three-legged stool of the financing, he's got it in place. He just needs time to congeal it and make it happen.
Alderman McMenamin.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle, for coming here from St. Louis and bringing your experience and your credibility to these kinds of projects. Here's the, the question, what advice do you give this city council now, at this point in time, to encourage completion of this project and financing partners to come forward and, and be available to bring this to completion?
Well, I don't think I need to give anybody advice. Everything that's been discussed here is, is, is right on, and both from the concern as well as the, as what your, the bonus of, of what happens if the project completes. I just, the concern would be, I guarantee, I guarantee you, there's, there's several developers out there that will move ahead with a project that they want to do once they see someone else be successful. Even if, I don't know that Rick will ever make any money out of this project, but he'll have the pride of finishing it, and he'll have the pride that he did what he said he'll do. And that's base, and, but it will cause other developers to say, holy Toledo, he just got $2,000 for a unit and it's going to rent. And that means that I can, we can rent some others and we can rent some for less money. And next thing you know, next thing you know, there'll be several people wanting to do projects all over downtown. I think that's, that's my primary, and then the last, then on the negative side is if you pull the plug on them, it'll get ugly fast in regards to what happens to those buildings, what happens to that restaurant, what happens to the, the future of, of other people wanting to take on a project.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we close the debate and call the question. I ask for a roll call.
Second.
I know you're anxious, Michael Higgins, 1808 Dial Court, Springfield, Illinois. Know you're anxious to vote. Sorry to take that away from you for a couple minutes. But I'm not here to talk about Rick or his project, or his financing or anything like that. What we have across the street from my business is a business that we took down a facade that attracted pigeons and whatever, was eyesore for the city. And unless you have another developer in line that you're not telling us about, now we have a facade of broken windows, open windows, more homes for pigeons, more homes for whatever, not conducive to the business that is already there. And we're going to make that the corner of Sixth and Monroe. So I don't know about Rick's problems, I don't know about the financing, I do know what the building is like, and I do know that there's a tenant in there that probably, as the building dilapidates more and more, they probably won't want to be there. So like I said, unless you have a developer in mind and you're not telling us, then why not see if he cannot get the financing?
Question's been called.
The question's been called.
As for a roll call.
Roll call on the debate. So move it to debate, roll call.
Alderman Redpath.
Yes.
Alderman Señor.
Yes.
Alderman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulginsy.
No.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderman Decenzo.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
No.
Alderman Tylin.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Yes.
Alderman, you have eight.
Seven.
Seven, seven yeses and two no's.
Okay, so this moves to debate.
2018, 251, in order to authorize the execution of an agreement with Land of Lincoln Economic Development Corporation to provide economic development from May 1st, 2018 through February 28th, 2019 for an amount not to exceed $250,000.
Move to debate.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Corporation Council, if the mayor's willing, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Alderman Proctor.
Same request, be added as a co-sponsor.
Noted.
Any other discussion? Is there someone here who would like to speak on this?
I'm Jim Dixon, I live at 7 Homewood Court, Springfield, 62704. And I'm here on behalf of the Faith Coalition for the Common Good. And we've had many discussions with the county on the Economic Development Commission. And we're very glad to see the language that the mayor has inserted here to make sure that there be some minority participation, which the county was not at all in favor of. The one thing that we would suggest is that there be another addition to your agreement that would say, such formal plans shall include a requirement that all meetings of the EDC Board be open to the public unless the board votes to close the meeting due to the discussion of confidential information related to potential business opportunities. However, all final votes of the EDC shall be in an open meeting. Such formal plans shall also include a mechanism whereby members of the public can obtain EDC documents unless the EDC determines that there's a need to keep a requested document confidential. When we had this discussion with the county board, their concern was that if a business wants to have a discussion with them about whether they want to come or not, they want to be able to not have that discussion in public because of maybe some financial records and things of that type. We don't have a problem with that, but it is our belief that that is the only time that this Economic Development Commission should go into private meetings. And we support, like I said, that the Economic Development Commission, but would suggest that you consider adding that language. We'll be glad to forward that language to the Corporation Council.
Mr. Jerkle, the Economic Development Council is not an entity of the city, correct?
That is correct.
So we are not in a position to make that demand.
You are in.
To do with their open meetings and whether their open meetings are eligible or not.
I believe that if it's your money, you can set the guidelines in your agreement.
If it would be possible to get a copy of the language.
Yes, we'll get it to you.
Thank you. There was a pretty spirited discussion on this point about the FOI, open meetings concept. And so if we could see the language, that's something I can talk with the mayor about. And the agreement, remember, this is a private entity, although some of the funds are public. So there is some concern on the part of the EDC on how far they should go in terms of compliance with both open meetings, we're talking about open meetings for voting, also the issue about FOI being able to get documents, you mentioned documents.
Sure.
And so there's been a pretty good discussion on that very point. And if you would provide the language, then we can try to take a further look at it. However, Alderman Tylin is exactly correct, it's a private entity.
Yes, it is.
Of which the city and county, but city in this case, is providing funds in order to operate it. So the agreement is certainly subject to discussion, but we cannot impose conditions on them.
Thank you.
But if I could get the language, I would appreciate it.
Let me get to you, sir.
Okay, thank, thank you, sir.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, just as a, just as a brief point, Madam Chair, the concept of EDC, this isn't the first time that we've had EDC.
That's correct.
This is a good, a good effort to hit the reset button, and I support that completely. But, you know, back in the, back in the day, 20 years ago, we had an Economic Development Council that was a partnership between the chamber, the city and the county, and these types of issues were discussed as far as, you know, the confidentiality, the need for at least, you know, at least staff and board to have conversations with private developers about coming to Springfield. And it is, it is a sensitive topic. I hear your point about wanting to be involved, wanting the community to have the ability to know what's going on, that is a fair point. And surely there's got to be, it worked, it worked 20 years ago, surely there's got to be a way to make it work. So I entertain that.
So there was a motion for debate in a second.
More discussion?
Oh.
Back when we were discussing our budget back in February, there was talk that, and maybe I'll just ask Alderman Tylin, there was talk about whether, Chris, you were having conversations with the mayor or with the county that if you would, you would vote for a sales tax increase if the mayor would support a quarter of a million dollar agreement with the county. Did you have those discussions with the mayor or with anyone at the county?
I believe the discussion came up that if the sales tax passed, could a portion of it go toward the EDC? The EDC originally was asking the city for $500,000. And if the city doesn't participate, at the time, the mayor didn't feel that we had the funds under our current system. And I just asked the question of, if additional funding is found, will we be able to, can we at least entertain the idea of making a $250,000 commitment to the EDC and being a part of this? I know it's not the $500,000 that the county's asking for, I know it's not the money that the city would like to put in in order to be a part of this, because this could be a great economic engine. But the question came down to, if we didn't find additional funding, there was no money in the existing budget to join.
Well, I'm asking a more specific question. Originally, the mayor was of the position that he didn't want to give 500,000 or 250,000, he might give a portion of 100,000 that we used to give to the Springfield Chamber of Commerce. And the mayor was looking for, you know, more votes for a sales tax increase. And so I'm asking a specific question about whether you said you would support a sales tax increase if the mayor would change his position and support a quarter of a million dollars to give to the county.
Let's see how, I guess the question in my mind is, are you asking, did I sell my vote to get this money over there?
No, I'm just asking a specific question.
Or are you asking if I said that?
I'm interested in how the mayor changed his position on this and, and how we got to six votes on the sales tax.
Well, if you remember correctly, back in the, back when this was all going on, I actually was pushing for, if we're going to go in, let's go all in. And I was pushing for a half percent sales tax to get us out of where we were going, because we're not going to be looking good this year, next year, the year after. And when I pushed, and I spoke with the mayor, I said that if we have the funding, we should be joining the EDC. And I think that's the same thing that a number of people around the council said. It wasn't just from me, it wasn't just any kind of deal that I cut in the back room. It was a statement of fact that if we have the funding, we should be joining this. It was a statement of fact that if we have the funding, we should be joining this. And the mayor said that at the time, if we don't get additional revenue, we don't have the funding to entertain that option.
Well, it's a matter of interpretation whether we've got the funding, because we are running a deficit, is that correct, Alderman, Chris Tylin? We are running a deficit this year. So we're just saying how deeply we want to go into the hole. So I don't think we got the funding for this, and so I just want to get that out there.
Alderman Proctor.
Yeah, a quick follow-up question to Mr. Dixon's request, and maybe the Corporation Council can do a research for me. I want to say Champagne, if I'm getting it wrong, but I want to say that their, their setup they have is open to public. And if you could research that and get back to us on that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
General City Business, 2018, 243. An ordinance amending Chapter 10, Section 10.05 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code Ordinances as amended pertaining to definitions under general provisions.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes.
I think last week I asked to be added as a co-sponsor. You can add that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Alder, oh, Alderman Senior.
What is this, can you explain this?
Yes. Alderman Tylin actually came up with this.
All it does is, for the city code and for city purposes, in the cases of when taking the oath of office, being referred to on paper, in your letterhead, your business cards, things of that nature, right now, the only position that exists in the city code is the position of alderman. And it has come up several times this year and in the previous year that we should be moving forward. And I've noticed that some of the other cities had. I looked into it. I looked to see what was going on. And the position of being able to refer to the alderman in a gender-neutral form or as alderwoman is, has come up. And I just thought maybe it was time to bring Springfield into the next century.
Some cities just refer to them as alders.
Do they have any legal ramifications to you, counsel?
Yeah, well, I can answer that. I mean, when passing nominating petitions, you have to say alderman.
But this doesn't affect that.
Doesn't affect that.
This does not affect state board of elections. That's something that Alderman Turner can probably talk about.
Alderwoman Turner.
If this passes.
But what if you got a, what if you got a male candidate running against you, wants to run for alderman in your ward, is he going to be running for alderwoman?
No, he's still a male.
Not with this ordinance. It's something else that, like I alluded to.
I mean, I can start calling you alderwoman Redpath if it's okay with you.
Let's don't get into name-calling, because I'm good at this.
A woman is being called a name. Go ahead, Alderwoman Turner.
I would just say that there's currently legislation moving through the General Assembly that is changing several political monikers to be gender-neutral so that the committee man is no longer, will no longer be that, will be committee person, and chairman will just be chair. So that legisla, as many cities are currently doing that, the state of Illinois is moving in that direction as well. I think it's already passed the Senate and is currently in the House, and I expect it to, it's sailing through on a bipartisan support.
Stepping into 2018.
Taking a screen.
That's right. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
2018, 244. An ordinance to decrease the number of Class D liquor licenses by one due to closure of business by Luca Pizza Incorporated.
Motion for consent. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
President.
2018, 245. An ordinance authorizing a decrease in the number of liquor, of Class B1 liquor licenses by one due to voluntary relinquishment by AT&amp;W Grocery Incorporated doing business as AT&amp;W Grocery located at 2191 Stevenson Drive.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question. It doesn't relate to the immediate ordinance, but the location. Mr. Zirkel, years ago, I believe that this was a location that we passed a variance to allow them to have the sale of alcohol there. Is that variance, was it, was it conditional to where it was only for this business, or is that lot still available to have a liquor license?
I will need to check the language of the zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
I can do that, certainly.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Noted.
2018, 246. An ordinance approving the appointment of Kamika Robinson to the Springfield Housing Authority and Board of Commissioners.
Vote to debate.
Second. Any discussion?
Discussion. There's our, the resume for Ms. Robinson includes several sentences. And the last sentence states, "It is my understanding that Ms. Robinson is willing to serve in this capacity and would make a wonderful contribution." I'm just, so this looks like it, it isn't really a resume from Ms. Robinson. It's someone that's written this on her behalf, and I just, I'm interested in who wrote this on behalf of Ms. Robinson for attribution purposes. If you can't answer it now, maybe we can answer it next meeting.
All those in favor? Opposed?
2018, 247. An ordinance amending Chapter 33 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code Ordinances as amended establishing the Convention and Visitors Advisory Board.
Move to debate.
Second.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Originally, I wanted this to go to debate, but I'd like to ask if everyone could entertain the idea of putting it, leaving it in committee till some questions are answered. There were some things about it that I felt were too open-ended the more I read the ordinance, specifically Section A2, where it says that four members shall come from the hotel and motel association industry and at least one member from each of the following areas. And it says at the top that there's 13 members total, and then we'd have four, and then we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight listed, which would leave one additional, only one extra. So I guess my question becomes, why would we, why would we say at least one member of each of these when I think that there may be another potential ability to name a ninth category instead of leaving it open to where we could have two people from one category which might wait or tilt the board?
How does everyone feel? Do you want to put it in committee?
And I guess the other question I had in here is, I didn't see where it listed how many times a year they had to meet. There's no requirement for the number of meetings. And it did say in here that if someone missed more than three meetings in a year, in a calendar year, they would be deemed to have resigned. But nowhere in here does it say how many meetings a year they have to have.
So you need some clarification.
I, I just feel that it's not fleshed out.
I'd be okay with revising my motion and to hold it in committee for additional committee opportunity to discuss. And I also think, Alderman Tylin, it may be useful for us to have a member of the city council on this advisory committee like we have for the animal control, like we have for Regional Planning Commission.
That would be a nice category.
To have some participation by the city, city council members. So I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll second his motion to leave it in committee.
Okay, so all those in favor of leaving it in committee?
Aye.
Opposed?
2018, 252. An ordinance to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses by one for Anchors Away Corporation doing business as Anchors Away located at 518 East Capitol Avenue.
Move for consent. Second.
All those in favor?
CWLP, 2018, 248. An ordinance authorizing additional funding in an amount of $11,300 under proposal number UE16-19. Unit 4 Cooling Tower Inhibitor Chemical with Buckman Laboratories Incorporated for a total amount not to exceed $82,401.80 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
2018, 249. An ordinance accepting and authorizing execution of proposal number UE18-12 with Campaign County, Champagne County Highway Department for removal of beneficial use of boiler slag from the alderman units 31 and 32 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion?
Director, is this, can you tell me this, does this interfere with our contract that we have to haul away the fly ash, or is it this different?
No, this is, this is separate. This is just our bottom ash and boiler, both 31 and 32.
And how did we come up with this price?
We went out for an RFP, and this was the only company, actually, we had two companies that bid. One wanted us to pay them $17 a ton, and they offered to pay us, I think it's $2, $5 a ton.
Good enough. Thanks.
All those in favor? Any new business coming before the committee?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Mr. Zirkel, we had requ, we had spoken about the interim books and the need for, you had mentioned that there was still a need for an intergovernmental agreement to be brought forward in ordinance form. And I believe that this body requested if we could see a copy of the existing contract. I don't believe that we have gotten a copy of that contract yet, and I was wondering how long will the intergovernmental agreement be on first reading for the next city council?
Yes.
Okay. And could we get a copy of the contract sent to Tim Griffin, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Proctor.
I guess there's a follow-up to that question. Will that ordinance or contract be submitted to the Board of Managers for review, or has it already?
They've looked at it, and the reason it wasn't on the last time is because we kept getting a series of changes, actually, the day of the meeting, from different people. So I think we've got everybody's comments. And yes, it is my understanding that, based on what I received, it's my understanding that they've seen it.
Okay. And, oh, I'll ask later. All right, thank you.
Okay, sure.
Alderman Redpath.
Corporation Council, we've been dealing with the Walmart situation for a year or two now, and there's, it's a truck parking lot again. So can you give me an update of where we are with that and how much money they owe us?
I'll have to get you an update on the exact amount. It was up in court, I believe, last Wednesday. They have submitted a plan, I'm sorry, they have developed a plan. I don't think they've submitted it yet to Public Works, but CMT advised the city that they had developed a plan to basically correct the issue. It was provided to Walmart, according to the attorney, but Walmart has not sent it on to the city yet.
Because they removed the rodeo crowds.
That is correct.
And that's what started the problem back up.
And the security, I think, also security.
Right. And that's what's got it back to where it started from. So just want to make sure we get that resolved, because we're still getting, somebody's going to get hurt there. And you, you drive by it like I drive by it, so you know exactly what I'm talking about.
We have advised them that the fines will continue to accumulate, so they're very aware of that. And they ended up changing council, and, but I'll get a later update for you. In other words, I can get that to you tomorrow.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Yes.
Alderman Senior.
Director Mahoney, I know it's grass-cutting season again, and I drive by a lot of places where they're cutting the grass and throwing it in the streets. You know, and this leads to when it rains, we have clogged-up sewers. Is there anything, I know we have an ordinance that addresses that, is there anything we can do to address those? And a lot of it are commercial people cutting grass that are just throwing it in the streets.
If you do, you see that happening, I advise you, if, say something to them, and also notify our housing division at 789-2167.
I don't want to stop and say anything to them, but I can, I mean, but they're bigger than I am.
We'll just send it to us, and then we'll send somebody out.
And also, okay, and then also, I had a couple of people that did some cleanup, and they put the bags by the curb, and they got fined for sitting the bags by the curbs. I was wondering if you could take a look at those two for me and...
Yeah, if you give me the address afterwards, we'll reach out to them.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks.
Alderman, oh, go ahead.
Mark, a follow-up on what Alderman Senior was mentioning. In the past, you've said that if constituents get a video of them doing, doing it, that they can submit it to your office, and that that would prove that the, who was, who actually did it? Is that still valid?
It has been previously, when, in speaking with the code enforcement, if a witness was willing to sign an affidavit, I think that would suffice. What we usually do is if we get complaint, we'll send a housing inspector out there. Typically, if we know where it came from, they'll knock on the door. And a lot of times, if it's a resident, they will come out and they'll clean it up. We've done that before. Occasionally, an NPO will intervene and say something to them. We try to work with the neighbor best we can. If it got to that point where we had to go that route, then of course, it'd be working with code enforcement and possibly get an affidavit from the person who saw it happen.
Okay. And then as a follow-up on that, related, I had a constituent over the weekend videotape someone fly dumping. They got the vehicle, they got the license plate, they may have gotten a good profile of the person as they were unloading things from the truck.
That's the one you sent me, correct?
Yes.
Yes. We're in the process, Chief Winslow has instructed, well, the assistant chiefs, to work with the housing tomorrow, so we'll be reaching out, trying to figure that out and address it, so.
And also, Director, I have a long list of the lots that need to be cut in Ward 2. There's about three pages of them.
Hopefully, most of those are already on our list. We sent out another pack, I think, a few, 300 to contractors in the last couple of days. So with the weather, the way it changed, we've been hit pretty hard. We are on our second round of our mowing, just with our, our guys. And then also, some of our contractors are on the third round. But the harder ones, the first round, if it's a vacant lot, what we're required to do is post notice, saying you're responsible for it. After we get past that initial notice, you've seen it around in the paper a couple of times, then going forward, it'll be on an automatic mow. So hopefully, once we get past this period here shortly, you're going to see a major improvement out there on the lots.
Very good, thank you.
And what about the tracks on, I sent you an email yesterday, on South Fourth Street?
The tra, I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm not sure I saw that.
There's mowing, yeah. I sent you an email yesterday that needs to be done.
Yes, there is mowing, there is a lot of mowing needs to be done. So we're working through all that. The railroad, actually, a citation is in the process, actually probably went out already to, to the railroads, and I think it includes that as well, so.
Fantastic.
And what we'll do is we'll give them, we've taken a new approach, and we talked a little bit about, especially on that Third Street corridor, they're given seven days, which is unlikely, they'll probably respond in seven days. And that's what we're going to do is turn it over to a contractor, and it should be mowed. We should have probably got a little bigger jump on it and tried to get it before Memorial Day, but it looks like a lot of that railway corridor will probably be next week, sometime of the following early week, then we'll get it.
Thank you. Alderman Proctor.
I just want to thank everybody for coming, okay, just want to thank everybody for coming downtown. We had a busy weekend in downtown Springfield, but this Friday, come up north, the Beach Boys are at Robin Robin Stadium.
Thank you to the purchasing department for putting out the, getting the RFP out for the vacant lots, and hopefully that went well. I know that there are still many that did not get picked up. So is there a process for individuals that may, that may be interested? Because I'm sure that you still want to get them off your hands.
I just actually had a discussion with Cassandra on this today. Right now, we are waiting for Oped to finish up with the grouping that just came in. They oversaw that. Going forward, OBM, I think, is going to take that back over, and we'll be working on that and purchasing. My advice is if anybody's interested in lots that are still available after the 20 or 30, whatever it was, just came in, that they submit their name.
Okay.
And let us know. That way, when we do put it out, we can...
You can contact them.
We can contact them and let them know that it's out there.
Okay, so they should, they should submit their name to OBM?
Just have them call our office, and we'll, we'll take that down, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there, I'm sorry, can we get a list, and I know you guys are still working on it, but at some point, when you're finished, can we get a list of those that are still available?
Please.
Because I had someone give me a list of like five that they were, they didn't know that they, that it was up. So if you could just let me know the ones that are still available, thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just make note of the fact that this coming Monday is Memorial Day or Decoration Day to honor all those that died in the armed forces in times of war, and Alderman, Councilmember Turner, you have a nephew that passed away in Afghanistan, so we've all got very direct contacts with individuals that have, are no longer with us.
And then the library is starting their summer reading program, is that correct, Director?
Yes, it's starting on the second of June.
June second for the summer reading program.
So the program is starting on June second, we're actually having, the library, Reading Takes You Everywhere, and so we're having our grand, our bon voyage party on the second at ten o'clock, so I hope to see you all there, because adults can do it too, it's not just for kids.
Fantastic.
Thanks, guys.
Are there any citizens that would, that wish to address the committee?
We have a young Boy Scout.
Yes, there's-
Young man, would you like to come up and identify yourself in your troop?
You're on.
And tell us why you're here.
Welcome. I'm Jacob Lindstrom, I am from Springfield, Illinois, but I'm in Troop Fifty-eight of Rochester, Illinois. And I am attempting to do a merit badge for Boy Scouts, which I'm also in, I'm in Venture Crew and Boy Scouts, they're both Troop Fifty-eight, and then I'm attempting the citizenship and community merit badge, I have to attend a community meeting, interview a government official.
We're sorry.
Here's your alderman right here.
Well, thank you, and congratulations, and good luck.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good luck, buddy.
Anyone else wishing to address the council?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Too late.